Good morning, it's July 11th, it is 10 o'clock. And Commissioner Secor and Commissioner Blum are here. Commissioner Hawkins is at his function that he told us that he was going to be at. If at this time you could rise for a moment of silent meditation, then I pledge to the flag. Thank you.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I? Turn off my phone. Okay, we all have consent and approval.
Good morning. Okay, got 38 exonerations for 18,335.26, two replacement tickets for 8,621.38, and there's also a correction to the July 5th exonerations. I guess there was a ticket that was labeled incorrectly, so that has to be changed. We have minutes for February 7th, 14th, 21st, 28th, March 7th, 14th, 21st, 28th, April 4th, 11th, 17th, 18th, 25th, May 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, June 6th, 13th, 21st, 27th, and July 5th. Vouchers for General County Fund, 7,64,627.01, magistrate court, 259.20, 911, 587.10, Chestnut Ridge Park, 8,425.62, Mason Dixon Park, 7,870.46, such as valuation, 28,053.19, purchasing card vouchers for General County Fund, 17,640.41, magistrate court, 53.05, 911, 231.35, Chestnut Ridge Park, 7,67.70, Mason Dixon Park, 389.73, for a voucher total of 828,904.82. We have a budget revision for coal severance fund. I don't know if you want me to elaborate on that.
No.
Nope. Nope, okay. We also have position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Board of Zoning for West Run, Planning Commission, Chief View PSD, River Road PSD, Pleasant Valley PSD, the Mon County Development Authority, and the Mon County Building Commission. We have fiduciary orders for July the 11th, 2018, and then there's a separate fiduciary matter that you all will need to take up.
Okay, so move for approval?
Second, proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have a specific fiduciary order. Did you want to read the order or read generally?
It's the estate of Susanna Marie Messenger, and it was referred to a fiduciary commissioner. She is making a recommendation. You guys have reviewed it, so.
Okay. The, I want to, were you going to?
Yeah.
You need a motion first?
Yeah, we need a motion, and then I'll add to suspended.
So, the motion that I would like to put forward is that we deny the initial motion for hearing for the removal of John Russell Messenger as the personal representative, and require that the complaint will be directed to request a hearing before the fiduciary commissioner and to present evidence supporting his motion for removal.
Okay. Second, I believe there's someone here to speak on it, and normally we wouldn't do it, but since we heard you were coming, if you would like to speak on this issue, you have three minutes. And if you can bring any new items, because you've been before several times.
Yeah, and in fact, I do have a new item.
Oh, okay. Could you say your name and address?
Yes, Elijah Case, 95, Brookhaven Road. Anyway, I had spoke with the fiduciary commission on a couple of occasions. The conversations didn't go well. All I was trying to obtain was why the letters had not been mailed out, because my last visit here was with the understanding when I left that you were referring it to the fiduciary commissioner for the purpose of the recommendation, and that we would all get letters in the mail. And when I had initially contacted the commissioner, she told me that no such thing happened, that you did not send that stuff over, and you would not send that stuff over, and if I wanted a hearing, I needed to come to her office, and so forth. Well, the information was contradictory to what I understood, so I had contacted the fiduciary office, the clerk, and she assured me that Ms. Crane did, in fact, get all the information and was supposed to make a recommendation that week. Well, the day came and went, and I tried to obtain some information on it by contacting Ms. Crane again, and Ms. Crane says, no, such thing happened. And I'm like, well, I just spoke with the clerk, and the clerk assures me that you got the information, no decision had happened. Okay, that's one issue. Everything that, between me and Ms. Crane was very tense, okay? She was not forthcoming with what I was hearing from the clerk and from here at the commission. Okay. Now, yesterday I received the text from my brother. The context of that text in short states that Victor Taggart, who is representative of the property that is out of state, that I was concerned with about being put into the probate process, which totals more than the rest of the estate, had apparently told my brother, and I only say apparently because obviously I'm getting this secondhand from my brother, but I do have the text. In short, what it states is that he had spoke with a lawyer, and even though the land was supposed to be divided up equally amongst him and his siblings, that it was unclear because our names weren't a part of all of that. Well, all of his siblings were alive at that point.
Okay.
And they all have children.
Okay. So, again, specific to the motion, what is it that, if you could just put in a couple sentences, what you were requesting and how?
Well, what I would request is maybe one of two things. One would be to either forego the fiduciary hearing with Ms. Crane and make a judgment of your own. I trust both you gentlemen to do so, you know, whether it's with her recommendation or whether it's against her recommendation. The other option would be to give me enough time to put together with my siblings, either putting myself in as executor, because Johnny is not completely opposed to that, and/or getting a third party to handle this, because now we're looking at not one lawyer, we're looking at two lawyers. We're going to need one for the title that is missing.
Okay, I understand. Okay, so those are the two options you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to make a comment and also?
Yeah, part of the problem is here, and there's been some process confusion, which we've, even on our side, that we've reconciled. But in your discussions with Ms. Crane, there's kind of a chicken and egg thing. She's not engaged until someone pays, puts up the bond.
I understand.
For her to have that, and that hadn't occurred, that's kind of like.
But she was counseling Johnny.
Okay, well, she has, she's given us the recommendation, this recommendation is dated July 10th.
Yeah, could you read that? Thank you.
Yeah, what her recommendation is, is the motion that I propose, wherefore your fiduciary commissioner respectfully recommends that the county commission deny the motion for hearing for removal of John Russell Messenger as purple as a personal representative, require that the complaint be directed to request a hearing before the fiduciary commissioner and to present evidence supporting his motion for removal. Further, the complaint should be instructed there is cash hearing bond due to fiduciary commissioner before any hearing set. Now, that's the first step, and again, this is a complicated issue. We feel, again, based off of Tom seconding my motion, that the fiduciary commissioner is better suited to tear through these issues and get to a resolution, which she's going to provide back, a recommendation which she's going to provide back to us. So, we're trying to keep ourselves out of being the middleman and let our fiduciary commissioners do their job. They're the ones qualified to parse through all this information and provide a recommendation back to us.
Okay. So, I understand completely everything that you just said. Okay. I was for this from the get-go, and it was my understanding that that was what was going to happen when I filed the complaint and paid the $56, okay? We're close to three months down the road, and we're no further than we were three months ago, okay? And Mr. Messenger is no further along with anything as far as the process of the probate My conversations with Lynn Crane do not lead me to believe that she is the one suited, and I would request that we could possibly.
Part of that is because she hasn't been engaged until you pay the bond.
Well, I understand that, but she did counsel Johnny on an occasion.
Excuse me, okay. We appreciate, you've been here several months. We've heard enormous amount of testimony each time, and we've tried to work out. We now requested the fiduciary to give us a ruling. What we're going to do is act on the ruling, and then you can go from there, okay? So, that's what I wanted you to know, but I did want to allow you one more time, and again, as you said, you have information, a new information. That may be correct, but there is nothing in writing that we have, so we are going to go with, the motion is to go with what the recommendation is by the fiduciary agent, and then you could go the process that way. That's what we're going to recommend, so.
And again, if there's been delays, and I take that, you know, we were part of the delay.
Yes.
And some confusion on our initial motion.
And I'm okay with your decision. I'm just asking that maybe we assign this to a new commissioner?
We're going to go through the process. I don't believe that it's, if you come up with specific reasons to her, and she would dismiss herself, but that is going to be up between you and her, not with us, because we are.
Well, it's a process question. Could I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, maybe you can answer.
When this is referred down, is it already decided who's, and she's already been involved with this, or is this just get assigned to whoever gets it?
We sign on a rotation basis so that it's equally spread through the fiduciary. So, at the time that Mr. Case filed his petition to remove the personal representative, Ms. Crane was the next fiduciary commissioner on the list. And when they receive those, as long as there is not a conflict of interest that they have with any of the parties involved, then they will accept that. I do believe that the issues that Mr. Case is having with the fiduciary commissioner stem from the fact she's not actually engaged until she receives a deposit, and that's, she can't really speak to.
That isn't my issue.
Well, I know, but that is, but that's the law. That's what we have to tell you.
And my thought is, is she's already, no sense in re-educating somebody else on this. She understands, we send it down. Do we give a certain deadline, is there a certain deadline as far as when the process would happen?
Four to six weeks, is it?
Once we send it to her, when she'll be engaged and?
No, because it all stems from the engagement of the parties involved with her specifically for payment of the fees.
Okay, so if that were to happen today, then?
And that would be with, she would make arrangements once she receives her.
I know that she's not supposed to stay, be engaged, but that's my problem, is she has been.
But it doesn't matter, I appreciate it, but we have to make the decision, and then you can make, if you disagree, then you go through the legal process. So, that's what we're saying. So, what we wanted to make sure you had your time to speak, and as you know, this has been a three or four month process. So, I do appreciate you coming before us, but we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, so all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now you can go from there, okay?
Okay. So, may I ask one last question outside of this?
Sure.
Thank you. The process in filing a complaint against the fiduciary commissioner, where would that start?
I would refer that to the, how would you respond to that, because I'm not sure how you would respond?
You can file a complaint, your complaint would actually be filed with the county commission because the fiduciary commissioners are appointed by the county commission.
Okay, so I'd be right back here?
You would be right back here.
Yes.
Okay, so how do I schedule that?
But from our standpoint, again, I'm just, how could we, she has not been engaged.
She has with Johnny.
She has not been officially engaged, so until she's officially engaged, we can't, it'd be a waste of time for us to make a decision on her.
I understand, but.
I know she hasn't been paid, I know technically she hasn't been officially engaged, but she has, in fact, by Johnny's own accord, made contact with Johnny and counseled him.
Until we?
And to me, that's not her job.
But you can't make a complaint till it actually goes down to her and she's assigned it. That's what we're trying to say.
Okay, but isn't?
So, we've made our ruling, okay?
Isn't that a conflict of interest though now?
That is for you to bring up your points, and then we will evaluate it, but.
So, I schedule with her and?
You can submit a letter, your complaint letter, and you would submit that to either?
With the data of what?
The county clerk's office or the county commissioner's office directly, and then they would put that on, under correspondence that they received, and take it as a normal course of business for a county commission meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your understanding.
Thank you.
We have introduction of new employees. MJ.
Hi, good morning. I'm MJ Zink from Mon County Youth Services. We've recently served a lot of children, more than we usually do. In fact, we had 87 children last year, and that's a lot. We usually house eight. We've been housing nine and 10 at a time, doing special waivers and privileges with licensing, so we have a lot of kids that's being served, so there's a need for extra employment there. So, I have two, Brandon Wells, he was with us once before, and he left, he went to preschool, and so he's recently back in Morgantown, and he has come to me, and he's wanted some more opportunities, and he was great while he was here before, so I think he would be a great fit for YSC.
Okay.
And then the other one is Ira Wiles, which he's been part-time for the past three months, and I'd like to move him forward as full-time as well.
Okay, so you're moving, you're bringing in a previous employee as a full-time employee, and you're moving a part-time employee to full-time.
Yes.
Okay, move for approval?
Seconds, we probably moved in second, and just for clarification for the public, the budget, the board's budget has that covered?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
And then recently, I just wanted to add that our house manager has quit. Ed is no longer with us. He didn't give me a two-week notice, but however, he has moved on. He just stated personal and family reasons for his absence, and I will be filling that position. Two people in-house have applied for that, but I'm being fair and giving them each a few weeks to work with me on day shift, and I'll make that decision, and I will give that to Renetta when that happens. They're both already employees there, so.
Okay. So, we have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, music.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark.
Thank you.
As part of our budget and what we've been doing the last several years with our summer help for temporary part-time staff is our data entry for our dog tag program. I bring for you today two of our young individuals who we've brought on to do this summer's program for your blessing, Mr. Todd Stone Street, and Todd was with us a few years ago during this program, and Ms. Stephanie Webster, who's also new to us this year. So, I'm bringing them in front for the approval as we have within our budget to do our summer dog tag program, which they began Monday, July the 9th, so they've been with us just a few days.
Okay, and obviously, the costs are within your budget, but the number of FTE or individuals is also within your budget, right?
Yes, yes, this is actually what we budgeted for, was just the two. We've been at three, but we've cut back, and we have these two there, that Linda McCourt oversees with that, so she assists them with that.
Move for approval?
Second, proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, welcome.
Welcome and welcome back.
And Mark, I do want you to know, we are going to the NACO convention this week, and I received an email, something about pet dog tag, a new process and so on, so I'm going to go to that table to find out and then bring it back for you.
Okay.
Because it says so many people, it's an easier way of finding, you know, and keeping clarification, so, again, they always say it's easier, but I'm going to get that information, and I'll bring it back for you.
Great, thanks, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Now, go take your test, then.
You're done.
You're done. Okay, is there any other introductions? Okay, seeing none, we have comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to step up and speak? Okay. Mark, you want to state your name and address?
Absolutely. Mark Brazidas, 734 Courtney Avenue. I'm also the deputy mayor of Morgantown. Always a pleasure to be in these chambers, and I'm here simply to acknowledge our mutual interests in Bow Park, in building a new state-of-the-art, year-round, two-sheet ice rink, and maintaining and upgrading our airport. To expand on what a new rink would bring to our community, it would be a tremendous economic generator. We could potentially, with a new state-of-the-art rink, encourage the Penguins to have an exhibition game here, invite Stars on Ice to perform here, host hockey tournaments, regional, perhaps even national hockey tournaments, figure skating competitions, testing sessions, et cetera. So, this would benefit the rink itself, but equally as important, it would benefit the businesses in our community that would greatly appreciate the dollars that would be coming into our town. We have done, or Bow Park has done economic feasibility studies about a new rink, and I brought a color copy that I will hand in. I printed it out on my own printer, and I also will share with you the capital needs list for Bow Park. So, Bow Park is facing some serious issues in terms of what needs to be repaired, including the marilla pool and creps pool, but also various ball fields and parks. I wanted to share with the commission these items, and I will, are you the appropriate person to hand them to? Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much, and we will be discussing at 10:45, so we'll hold our comments till then. Is there anyone else interested in speaking? Okay, seeing none. We have Colin Coon with Grants.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a few requests for reimbursements. The first one is the JJDP grant, Voices 2 program, in the amount of $2,084.10. The next one is another JJDP grant, this is the DMC portion, in the amount of $5,393.50. And lastly, I have the VOCA grant in the amount of $5,942.2.
Move for approval?
Second, the proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes, thank you. Let me just sign them right now. We have correspondence.
None.
Okay, since the computer's down, I can't bring up the one letter, so I'll save it for next week, okay? Unfinished business.
I have none.
Okay. New business. Consideration of appointments to the Mon County Solid Waste Authority and the Mon County Board of Health.
If you just go ahead and do them one at a time?
Yeah.
We have Dave Custer, who's served on the Solid Waste Authority for many years, and he has submitted a letter asking to be reappointed. We received no other applications.
Good. I move for approval with comment?
Second, go right ahead.
Dave, Dave's here in our audience, he's also our MONI MS representative. I didn't know you served on the Solid Waste Authority, but we couldn't have a better individual, and I appreciate your support.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right, and he comes to the meetings, and he's always, when we have questions, he's there to answer them, so we really appreciate that. So, the proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Consider approval for requisition, oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
We also have an appointment to the Mon County Board of Health. Toni DiChiaccio was appointed, she just finished her first term, and she has submitted to be We received no other applications.
Yes, and move for approval with comment?
Second.
And again, Toni is a, you know, from my participation with the health department, Toni is a vital and extremely valuable resource to the health department, and I appreciate the fact that she's willing to re-up. I know there was a little bit, based on her schedule, that it took a little arm twisting, but we're really glad, it's a good mix with her medical background, you know, and just her business sense and her overall wealth of experience. I'm glad that she's decided to stay on.
Thank you. Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass. Now, we'll go to, to consider approval for requisition number six for the Morgantown Industrial Parks Airs 2017 A Phase II Project Fund.
Request from Enroute Properties, let's see, for $20,000 to be paid to Adrian Enterprises for project management.
Move for approval?
Second, proper move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other new business?
No.
Okay. Do we have any reports from elected officials? Nope. Okay, let's go to reports from county commissioners. Sean?
I was out of, obviously, I wasn't at the last meeting, I was out of town, but I was back in town on Friday, and all of our county employees, I had a great Fourth of July weekend, and I'm excited to begin another year. This is our fiscal year, it's not as a big deal as it is on the federal side, but it's still a new year, and it's, you know, we've done a lot in our past year, so I'm looking forward to this year. We did have an open government meeting on Monday, I'm going to want to my wrong notes. Sorry about that, but we had an open government. That's our participation in the West Virginia checkbook program, and we had a very informative and productive meeting on Monday. I was a little surprised because I thought that we were going to be talking about the nuts and bolts and, you know, the technical stuff in regards to getting the uploads, and the vendor was going through the site, and Renetta, you were in that meeting too, and all of our information was already in there for fiscal year 17, and I sat through half the meeting and just thinking, wow, that's pretty good, they've already able to pull this information from the auditor's office, but now we've got to figure out how our office has to figure out the upload process, and they'd already done that, because I brought that up, I said, where'd you get the information? They said, Tanya. So, Tanya is our clerk extraordinaire that works in the clerk's office, and they had already been interacting, and honestly, except for, we still have to get the revenue slide up, the site's ready to go, but we need to have a conversation in regards to when we go live, what our procedure will be, we'll have to set rigid procedures about the uploads, but I was really pleased to see, and I'm happy with the capability of this organization to be able to, what I thought it was going to be the first of 20 meetings to get to a point where we can actually look at a product, we already had the product at the first meeting, so it was very informative, and I'm excited about, again, talking to the commission and Carrie and the tax office, sheriff, to see when we can go live. It'd be nice, maybe, once we get to the end of this fiscal year financially and have our final budget or final actuals to. But it's a very, it's a very impressive product. We're the first county in the state, our state has this product already released. We're the first county to sign up, and we've actually been pushing them. We signed up, and they, we were probably three, four months ahead of them being ready to actually accept us. So, some people may be wondering, I thought you guys already did that. Yeah, we were waiting for the vendor to kind of catch up the speed, but we are going to be the first county, we're the first county that's signed up. I believe the auditor has since maybe gotten about four or five others to sign up. There's no municipalities yet, so deputy mayor, that might be, when you see it, it's impressive. Again, we can continue to lead that transparency effort and maybe have the city be the first city to sign up, but going forward, I'm really excited about this process. Yesterday, I had lunch with deputy mayor Brusitis. I appreciate you making time to meet with me. It's always good that we get together on a regular basis. I try to do the same thing within the county, and I also try to do the same thing with our other municipalities. And that kind of ties in with the project that Mayor Koepke and I have been working on, to, you know, have more, have a formal workshop between the whole county and to sit down and really drill down in some things that we can work on together and accomplishments that we can do. Last night, I had dinner with the 4-H older camp. It's very, again, I'm overwhelmed every time I go there. You know, these kids, they're so impressive, and it's such a wonderful service that 4-H extension provides to the county. I really enjoyed the commissioner Hawkins inviting us. Every year, he invites us to eat dinner with one of the camps, so last night was the night. This morning, I had our commission IT progress meeting, and I'll update you guys on staff reports as far as where we're at. Thursday, we have our red team meeting. That's the runway extension development team meeting, and then that always piggybacks with the development authority meeting. So, right into the new year, it seems to be moving as fast as last year did, and that's all I have, Tom.
Okay. I just have a couple quick issues. Just for clarification, recycling will be this Saturday. The reason why it's been off two weeks, it was the fifth Saturday in June, so that's why we didn't do it then, and then we had the July 4th holiday. But we will be having recycling again this Saturday. And again, people need to know that we still have the west oversight, that is every day Monday through Friday, from 7:30 to 3:30. Also, we will not have this time, because it's the second week, but we will not have electronics recycling at this, because things have slowed down, so we're going to be bringing it back up in August. The other comment is, a group of us are going down to the NACO conference. This is the first time I've been there, and also, Mon County will be receiving a national award for the Pantry Plus More program, and that's the real reason why I was attending. But also, the other importance is the vendors, and as I said earlier, when Mark Music was here, there's different programs, and they offer different suggestions, and with the dog tags, it's been something that we need, I think, a little better clarification on, so I'm looking forward to that. That is really it. I can't think of it, do we have any other issues?
And for the public, it's kind of behind the scenes, you guys don't, may not realize this, but our server was down, so a lot of things we do electronically, we had to revert back to paper on the fly about two minutes before the meeting.
Yes.
So, I know our IT staff's out there, they didn't find out until a minute before the meeting, but I think we did a good job in hiding the fact that we were blind up here. But other than that, I move to adjourn.
Second, probably move in second. We're adjourned. We'll meet back in 10 minutes.